All right, folks, we're going to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the City Council for January 24th to order. Let the record reflect a starting time of 7:05. As included, the whole please note that we are still asking members of the public city staff, as well as all of our colleagues on council, to wear face masks, coverings, and we certainly appreciate your indulgence. That being said, Clerk Swol, would you please take the role?
Certainly, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley. Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember, oh, that's it. There are six members present at Quorum. Councilmember Spitzley is absent.
Thank you so much. That brings us to the meditation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmembers, Mayor Shore or Clerk Swol, do we have anybody that we need to remember tonight during our moment of meditation? Vice President Wood and the Mayor Shore.
Yes, many of us know Martha Miles. Her sister, Pastor Cora Duncan, is in hospice, and if we could remember Pastor Duncan at this time and the Miles family, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Unfortunately, I have three. One, for those who don't know, Delisa Fontaine's father passed away unexpectedly a few days ago, Calvin Otis, so if we can remember him and keep Delisa and her family in our thoughts. Two, I don't know who knows him, but a gentleman named Ken Cole, who is someone that is familiar with the Capitol, a lobbyist, a father. He is a Delta Township resident, but a longstanding advocate for the city of Lansing. He works for GCSI, and he passed away after a long battle yesterday. And third, and our neighbors to the north, Craig Kaler, who is the DeWitt School Board President, passed away of COVID, and we have sent our, I have sent my sympathies to his family, but if we can remember these three people in our meditation, I would appreciate it, Mr. President.
Absolutely. Are there others? Seeing none, if you please rise and join us in a moment of meditation, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
.................................................................................
So we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Sure. Do we have any council member comments tonight? Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. I just wanted to take a minute. I was not able to attend the press conference at Pleasant Grove in Jolly with the redevelopment that we're going to be receiving this evening, the Brownfield, for that. I first want to thank our president, Adam Hussein. I know that as we were dealing with development in the downtown area, one of the things that he's done with almost every developer that he's met with is to challenge them to do something on the South Side, to move away from the Lansing, downtown Lansing, and to engage and do things to work on the South End of the city. And Joel Ferguson and his development group took up that challenge and looked at a blighted piece of property at a corner where Councilmember Hussein and Councilmember Garza and different ones have worked diligently to try to make a difference by creating a town square. And this just adds to the synergy that is in and around that area. So not having been able to be there, I wanted these comments in the record. Again, I appreciate the fact that, one, the fortitude to challenge developers to make sure that they're working more than just in the downtown area, and, two, that we are seeing areas that desperately need that redevelopment happening in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there other council member comments? Okay, just very quickly, I want to take the opportunity to, again, particularly for the folks at home, discuss the process to appoint the applicant for the First Ward vacancy. This was set forth by resolution at our last council meeting, and we actually did open up, thanks in large part to the clerk's effort, we did open up the application period on Tuesday, January 11th, so that was the morning after essentially the day of our meeting. That was held open until this past Friday, January 21st at 4:00 PM, and I am thrilled to say that we received 11 applicants. And so again, thanks to the clerk's office for their efforts in supporting that process, really keeping us surprised, which they actually consulted, I shouldn't say consulted, but informed us on a daily basis in terms of, you know, what type of interest there was in that particular seat and who was applying. And with regards to the 11 folks that have applied, I mean, I think that's a testament truly to the passion and the commitment that have, that folks have for that First Ward. We know it's going to be a steep learning curve. The individual, if they want to serve next year, is going to have to essentially fill that position and then run for election and then turn around again next year and run for election again. And, you know, when these folks were kind of told of the challenge in front of them, they did not waver in their commitment to actually applying for that position. So I am incredibly excited about the opportunity we have before us. And with regard to that opportunity, what will take place, right now, the applicants are all being vetted to make sure that they meet the charter requirements to serve. On Monday, January 31st, starting at 6:00 PM, we will have a special committee of the whole meeting, where hopefully all 11 applicants will have up to 12 minutes to discuss their candidacy. And that's actually up from the 10 minutes that we discussed based on the number of applicants. We figured out kind of a timeline in order to give them a couple of extra minutes to state their case. We will schedule them alphabetically as to avoid really any appearance of favoritism or impropriety. There will be one 20-minute break. I think we have that scheduled for 7:10, so folks can use the restroom. There'll be light refreshments. We're not going to do a full-on dinner, some think fruit, crackers, cheese. If you need anything beyond that, council colleagues, make sure that you bring that with you. After all, interviews that night, each council member will select up to three finalists on paper ballots, which will then be signed and read into the record by our clerk at that time. The top three, and we talked about this last week, there could be more based on tie votes and that type of thing, will be named, the finalists will be interviewed for a second time at a special committee of the whole the following day. And so that will, again, be on February 1st. Those interviews will start at 6:00 PM. There will actually be a public comment period that will come prior to those interviews. And then following all interviews, each council member will cast their vote for their favorite appointee. The committee of the whole will then consider a resolution to point, and that will be adopted at a special council meeting later that night. The only agenda item in terms of that special meeting that will actually start at 8:00 PM on February 1st will be the passage of the resolution and the swearing-in of the member. And then that particular individual has a busy week. Our office manager, Sherry Bullock, has actually already put the schedule in place so that they can meet with departmental directors and do a number of things before we actually have our annual council training on February 7th. And so that's, if you guys have any questions, please reach out in terms of the folks at the dais, myself, Vice President Wood, as well as Sherry. We're pretty much in constant contact with regards to this. This is, it's not unprecedented, but it is rare. So it's been a bit of a learning curve for all of us, but again, we're thrilled that we've had so many applicants, you know, put their name in the hat. The other thing I wanted to address, I actually wanted to talk about the mixed-use development, 2130 West Homes, but Councilwoman Wood did a better job than I probably could. So thank you. I appreciate you. And then lastly, the South Side Community Coalition is seeking a, what we're going to call a Southwest Action Group Development Specialist. And if anybody knows anything about the Southwest Action Group's work, this group came together in 2017, formed as an official nonprofit in 2018, and they have just been an absolute force for change in southwest Lansing. But in any event, we've, you know, we've all benefited greatly from their efforts. That's what, that said, sorry, SWAG is made up of small business owners and really committed neighborhood citizens that are incredibly busy. And so it's been a goal of ours to bring somebody on that is actually paid to do the work, that can build organizational capacity and long-term sustainability. And so we actually, I should say, SWAG, has received funding from the County Sunrise Grant Program for the hiring of part-time development specialists. This individual will work with the Southwest Action Group over the next couple of years to, again, build that organizational capacity and hopefully support the myriad activities that SWAG engages in really to advance our southwest community. Huge, huge, huge opportunity, but in order for this to really deliver on its promise, we have to make sure that we have a healthy crop of candidates, and we want to make sure we get the right person. The job description and application can be found online by visiting southsidecommunitycoalition.com. Again, that's southsidecommunitycoalition.com. And if you click on employment opportunities, it's actually the first job opportunity that pops up. So again, critical position, and we hope folks share that opportunity. Thank you. Clerk Swol.
I do not have any announcements this evening, so we will proceed on to community event announcements. If there's anyone in the audience who has a community event, we'll give you up to one minute to tell us the details. And seeing no one jumping up, we'll go ahead and move on to registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative Matters tonight does include on the agenda items two through 13. Those are the things council will be acting tonight. That's the blue sign-in sheet. We'll give you about another minute to fill out a blue form if you wish to and hand it in to Jessica, our intern. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Clerk. Just a few things. Very excited about the half a billion dollars in new bridge money available to Michigan from the federal government for the infrastructure bill, so we will certainly be all over that. Director Kilpatrick is aware. Fortunately and unfortunately, we've actually done pretty well with bridge money from the state, but certainly we've got some bridges that we can check out for some of that money, and we continue to look at all of the money that's available at the federal government level. Like Councilwoman Wood and Council President Hussein, I'm really excited for the project at Pleasant Grove and Homes that was announced this afternoon. I do want to thank Joel Ferguson and his team. We, when we came in four years ago, they started talking about that. They talked about Red Cedar, and they talked about southwest Lansing. They got Red Cedar done, and then it was all about southwest Lansing. And for those who don't know who's on the, on TV, this is the school that Malcolm X went to for a brief period of time, and there's great recognition of that. There's great recognition that southwest Lansing doesn't have the, what they need for health care and for banking and other resources, and this proposal is to have a building there and then some housing, and I think it's really exciting. Our Brownfield Authority Board passed this Friday or Thursday, Friday, and it now comes to City Council to review the Brownfield plan. Certainly, it's a contaminated site, so I'm excited for this City Council to review. And I've been working really hard on this for the last few years because we know that all of Lansing is important in development throughout the city, but we know that south Lansing and especially the southwest area hasn't, it's seen a lot of resources, but we need to continue to help those areas. So I'm very excited. I also want to thank Councilman Hussein. As I said this afternoon, he's been a fierce advocate for the Third Ward, so it's appreciated. I'm excited tomorrow morning, the Strategic Fund Board will consider our request for a Renaissance Zone for the GM property. That's all I know as of right now, but we're looking forward to a positive decision and really great things happening in Lansing, the automotive capital of the world, being able to put forward a very strong proposal to GM as they make their final consideration for where to locate a $2.5 billion plant, for battery plant, for new cars, 1,700 jobs. You all know the numbers, just reminding the TV audience, but tomorrow morning will be a big decision, a big step forward, and I know that we are all very excited for the announcements tomorrow morning. So let's keep our eye on that. And then I want to let everyone know that on Saturday, Everett, Everett High School is doing a showing off of their bond improvements. They have had significant bond improvements at the school, and they're doing a dance recital and a program inviting the public to come see the bond work. I get to see it when I drop off my kids every morning, and it's gorgeous. So I hope the community will, will get to see all the incredible work that's been done at Everett High School. Go Vikings. Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate that. I do, I do want to just take one second. I really should have thanked a number of people with regards to 2130 West Homes. I apologize. At today's press conference, I spent a lot of time, obviously, thanking folks like Rachel White and Jason Wilkes and different groups such as the Southwest Action Group, Rejuvenating South Lansing, of course, LEAP, the L E D C, the administration. I've spent some time thanking my colleagues on council and the fact that you guys have been tremendous partners as we work to move south Lansing forward. And, and I ended with, you know, really my gratitude for Mr. Joel Ferguson and Chris Terkowski. This type of projects, just so folks know, we've been working on this for years, and it is not an easy project to bring across the goal line. When you talk about financing for a project like this, when you talk about the marketing for a project like this in a space such as this, it is, it is a very, very difficult project to bring across the goal line. And when you look at services such as access to reputable health care and access to, you know, reputable financial services and educational opportunities, I mean, these are the types of services that truly help to lift people out of poverty. But again, the reason why we don't see enough of them is because they are really, really difficult to bring across the goal line, particularly during a pandemic. And those two gentlemen, along with their team, just have demonstrated this unwavering commitment to making sure that they do something, you know, they call it a community build, I mean, project. That's really what this is. And they, and, you know, I said earlier, it would have been really easy for them to use any number of issues that were caused by the pandemic to, you know, to say, look, we got to fold up our tent, we got to walk off, and they have not. And so we greatly appreciate them. We're indebted to them, and I just wanted to make sure I made that part of the public record. Thank you.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, although we have had no one complete a blue form wishing to speak. So it's my understanding we are going to pull forward items number three and number eight, which are appointments, so that we can swear in the two folks who are here.
We certainly are. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Our first resolution that we have tonight is the appointment of Paul Collins as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commission for a term to expire on June 30th, 2024. This was vetted during the Committee of a Whole, and Mr. Collins has grown up in the area and is looking forward to serving on this particular board and seeing the entertainment and public authority continue to grow and use its, use the facilities to enhance life in Lansing. So with that, I would move this resolution.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Collins, if you come on down, we'll get you sworn in.
... All right, and if you could raise your hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of...
The Office of...
Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities.
Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities.
Authority Board of Commissioners Member.
Authority Board of Commissioners Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and again, we appreciate your willingness to serve. That brings us to agenda item number eight. This is a resolution of appointment for Krishna Singh as an at-large member of the Board of Fire Commissioners for a term to expire June 30th, 2022. Vice President Wood.
Thank you. At this time, we have an appointment of Chris Singh. Chris was vetted during the public safety meeting. Chris is a lifelong resident of Lansing. He also has spent 39 years in uniform. He is retired from the U.S. Army and Army Reserves. He also is retired from the Lansing Fire Department. He served on the mayor's Veterans Commission as the, the Fire Department liaison. With that, we believe that he will definitely be someone who will be an advantage for the Board of Fire Commissioners. This, as the president indicated, is an at-large position, and with that, I would move his appointment.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Mr. Garza.
Thanks, Council President. It's more of a comment than anything. I just wanted to say thank you for your service to the country, our country, the U.S. Army that you served in, your commitment to the city of Lansing, you're LFD retiree, and your commitment to the community, but your willingness to serve on top of retiring from the Lansing Fire Department. So thank you for your service and your willing to, your willingness to serve further after you retired by the Fire Board of Commissioners. So thank you, sir, and I look forward to supporting your resolution tonight.
Yeah, and I would, I would echo those sentiments. I was actually in on the committee meeting where we vetted Mr. Singh's candidacy, and I said in that meeting that I was excited about the appointment after I looked at the application, even more excited after actually having an opportunity to talk to Mr. Singh. You know, he talked about truly wanting to take his experience and the knowledge, obviously, he gained from the department and actually leverage that as a commissioner. And then he also talked about, you know, really wanting to be, you know, having this visible presence with regards to our stations and being there to onboard issues and complaints and concerns from our, from our first responders and then taking them to the board, and I certainly appreciate that. So with that being said, there is a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Singh, if you come on down. Certainly, if you want to bring, it looks like you have maybe some family members with you. We have some firefighters on hand. If they want to come on down and be a part of this, we would be more than happy to have them. Lucy, you're not coming down?
... You got to see how it's done. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire, Board of Fire Commissioners Member.
Of the Office of Board of Fire Commissioners.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
We are to ordinances for passage. We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter 890 of the Lansing Codified Ordinances, by amending Section 890.01 to reform guidelines for poverty exemptions for real property and to modify the percentage of relief granted during each year of exemption consistent with state law. The ordinance is read a second time by its title. It was reported from the Committee of the Whole and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. As was stated during the Committee of a Whole, this ordinance came to us on December 13th. We did have the assessor down at that time to explain to us why the changes in this, and as the clerk indicated, this is to align with the state law. We had a public hearing on January 10th and had no public comment at that time. This is an application process that individuals that are, have a disability or over the age of 65 would have to apply for the tax and receive, and could receive up to 100% exemption if approved. And then over the next two to four years, the value, taxable value reduced will be by 50% for those following years. And again, they would need to apply each year for this exemption. So with that, I would move the passage of the ordinance.
All right, there's the motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Swol, would you take the role?
On passage of the ordinance, Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted.
I would move for immediate effect.
There's a motion on the floor for immediate effect. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to the consent agenda.
All right, so we have actually already taken care of agenda items number three and eight, so that leaves a balance of four through seven. Are there other items folks would like to see taken off the consent agenda? Vice President Wood.
Yes, I would like item five, the liquor license pulled, so we can explain there is a difference in the address, and that way the clerk can give an explanation on that. So if we could pull that to vote on separately.
Okay, so we will pull that. Are there others? Seeing none. Vice President Wood on four, six, and seven.
Thank you. On resolution four is a liquor license for Batter Up LLC that is in, located at 621 East Michigan Avenue. Next is a development liquor license for RBM Properties at 224 South Washington Square. And the last for the consent agenda is a liquor license for Q5 Distilleries, and that is at 112 North Larch Street. So with that, I would move the approval of these resolutions.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to item five, the Hooked Community LLC.
Clerk Swol, if you want to talk about the address change, we'd appreciate it.
Certainly. This is part of the Red Cedar Development, which is a new build in, in the city of Lansing, and as a new build, it has to be assigned an address. Originally, it was preliminarily assigned the address of 3124 East Michigan Avenue, Suite F. However, the, the addressing has been refined, and it will instead not have a suite number. It will be 3142 East Michigan Avenue. So we need to just clarify that that is the address at which the address that is in the resolution at this point. Also, I would note for the council that you are, this is the second resolution on this license. The previous one was adopted in December, and that resolution will likely have to be revised at some point in time as well.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Wood.
I'm sorry. And that address again is?
31... 3142 East Michigan Avenue.
So, Mr. President, I would like to amend the resolution to reflect the correct address, the resolution in our books and in the packets that people might... And in the packets that people might be looking on online is 3124 and should read 3422. So I would make that amendment.
3142.
Forty-two.
3142.
All right, 3142. Sorry.
All right, so to the.
With that, I would move the amendment.
All right, so to the passage of the amended ordinance for 3142 East Michigan Avenue, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And now I would move the resolution.
There is a motion on the floor for the passage of the resolution. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to item nine, grant acceptance for the CERA-2 grant.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Before us, we have the approval of a acceptance of a grant for $10,376,326. This grant is similar to another grant that we had received. We were given this grant, awarded this grant on January 1st. The money needs to be spent by March 31st, 2022. That's why we're moving forward and trying to expedite the process. This particular grant, we are the fiduciaries for Ingham County. What we do is contract with other agencies that actually are in the field doing the work. They are required every week to give a report on the dispersment of funds, and then, once a month, a report is given to the federal government on the dispersment of those funds and how those are being allocated. This, again, is part of the emergency rent assistance for residents that are going through an adverse effects because of the COVID pandemic. So with that, I would move for the acceptance of the grant.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, the item 10 is Make Safe or Demolish for 4108 Deerfield.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. This came out of public safety. This particular property is owned by Brenda and William Titus. This is a fire-damaged property. It was originally tagged in 410, 2018. The property owner did come to Committee of a Whole, or Public Safety, excuse me. They are working on making some repairs but have not met the threshold at this time. There had been various permits that had been pulled and not completed, and as we spoke with the property owner, we explained that we were moving forward with a Make Safe or Demolish in 30 days if she met the requirements. At that point, working with code compliance, that this order could be rescinded. So with that, I would move for Make Safe or Make Safe or Demolish within 30 days for the property located at 4108 Deerfield.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 11 is Make Safe or Demolish for 2206 West Jolly.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This property is owned by Thomas and Rob Lynn Jones. The property at 2206 West Jolly is also a fire-damaged property. It was originally red-tagged June 8th, 2020. There's actually been three fires that have been, happened at this location. No permits have been pulled on this. The recommendation from code compliance was for Make Safe or Demolish within 30 days. The committee concurred with that. So at this time, we are moving forward, Make Safe or Demolish within 30 days of 2206 West Jolly.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? I do want to say that this is, this has been a problem property, really dating back to about 2017. I've worked with the administration, worked with building safety on this particular property, and I really feel like folks have kind of bent over backwards for this particular property owner. There have actually been four fires. One is recently, is about, you know, 15 days ago at this particular property, and there's just been zero work to move it forward. We've talked to the folks over at Station 6, which is kitty-corner to this, talked to the business owners in the area as well as the residents, and they are obviously all in support of the demolition process moving forward. So with that being said, again, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 12, fringe benefits for the executive management group.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. This was before us, before the request from the city attorney's office was to pull this. There were some things they wanted to check on. We do have the city attorney's office here with us. If you could please inform us as to what those changes are, and then we can move forward with this.
Ms. Hagan.
Yes, so the change to this resolution is to the effective date. It's going to be effective for those hired on or after February 1st, 2022. The previous version was retroactive, and upon our legal review, we determined that that was not appropriate, and so the recommendation was to make this change.
Thank you. Council is responsible for approving the executive management plan, even though this is negotiated by the mayor's office. And what this does would be changing the retiree healthcare benefits, and again, as the city attorney's office has indicated, would not take effect for, only for employees that are hired after February 1st, 2022. So with that, I would move these changes to the executive management plan.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And item 13 is a correction to a previously adopted resolution for Holly Seaberry.
Vice President Wood.
Thank you. This was adopted at our last meeting for Holly Seberg. This is an at-large position for the elected compensation, the elected officers' compensation board. We are changing the date from October 1st, 2023, to October 1st, 2024. So with that, I would move the reconsideration and amendment to this resolution.
All right, on the reconsideration and amendment, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, I'm sorry, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to reports of city officers' board, oh, I'm sorry, we're to speaker registration for public comment. If anyone in the audience wishes to address city council on any city government-related matters, please fill out a yellow form with Jessica in the next minute or so. And in the meantime, we are to reports of boards and commissions.
Vice President Wood.
At this time, I would move that all items be considered as being read in full and that proper referrals be made by you as president.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We have items from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And the park board annual report.
City operations.
Items from the mayor, the 2021 annual report.
Place on file. File.
Appointment of Jordan Sutton to the EDC, TIFA, and LBRA board.
Development and planning.
The appointment of Sharla Burnett to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
City operations.
And we have several appointments to the Arts and Culture Commission. We have Alice Brinkman, Shirley Carter Powell, Morgan Butts, Mary Toshash, Cece Bordeo, Kevin Bonds, Diane Garden, and Amanda Bearness.
Those will all be referred to city operations.
Okay, we have setting a public hearing, two actions related to brownfield plan number 80 at Pleasant Grove and Holmes.
Development and planning.
And two items related to Glenburn Commons Special Assessment for Trash and Grass.
City operations.
We have a grant acceptance for LPD justice assistance.
Ways and Means.
And we have two items relative to Make Safe or Demolish for 2131 Pleasant View.
Public safety.
Grant acceptance for Mishda, the CERA-2 grant.
Committee of the Whole and place on file.
And communications and petitions, a claim appeal from Ian Mioff for $3,290 in trash violations at 1900 North Washington.
City operations.
Okay, we are to motion of excused absence.
Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I've moved to excuse Councilwoman Spitzley.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Do we have any remarks, folks?
Remarks by the mayor.
Mayor Shore.
Yeah, I apologize, I forgot a few small neighborhood things. Just for folks to know, the neighborhood grants and program applications, so for all the neighborhood folks out there, the deadline to apply for neighborhood grants and programs is February 5th at 5:00 p.m. So if you've got sign toppers or bike racks, or you're a neighborhood or civic organization and you want to apply for our grant funding, please lansingmi.gov/grants to apply for our neighborhood grants and programs. Our participatory budget nights are moving virtual, so we're changing around some of those dates, so we'll have those announced soon, but certainly due to COVID, we want to be safe, so we're going to do those virtual. Similarly, our Neighborhood Resource Summit is going to be canceled until probably later spring for an outdoor event. So we'll announce that when it comes. And then finally, for those of you with kids, don't forget, there will be snow tubing on the city, free snow tubing at Hawk Island, courtesy of the city of Lansing. There are two sessions, an AM and a PM session, but pre-registration is required, and there's not going to be registration on the day of. So if you want to take part in free snow tubing on February 2nd, which I believe is a day off for Lansing schools, so come AM, come PM, go to parks online dot lansingmi.gov, and it's free for Lansing residents. So I hope everyone will join us there and get on the tubes and go right down those hills at Hawk Island for free. Just please pre-register, parks online dot lansingmi.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Swol.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. We have one speaker tonight, Nicholas Zandi. And you have three minutes.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here at tonight's city council meeting. I'm here to speak about the at-large positions on the city council. I've sent an email to the city attorney's office, and I still have yet to get a response, and I hope they do so now because I have conducted a poll on the Politics in Lansing Facebook page, and the majority of the responses to the poll have shown that the people of Lansing want those positions to be abolished. This shows support for my proposal to change this HR. Look, I'm trying to be reasonable to you, and because on the specific ballot language, I have specifically stated that those positions would only be abolished as the current terms of the at-large council members expire. And as, but that is as reasonable as I can really be with you because in my belief and in pretty much everyone's belief in the city of Lansing, you've clearly failed to serve the people of Lansing, and we need to get, change this right now, or else things will get worse, and we'll have more and more people elected who care more about their corporate interests rather than the interests of their constituents. That's why I drafted this proposal, and that's why it needs to be on the ballot for the August primary, and that's where I rest my kicks.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
All right, no other business before the body. We are adjourned at 7:50.